Call this meeting order. Tonight, we're going to be led in the pledge by Joshua Patton. He's a student at Stewart's Creek Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to this, I believe, is probably our last meeting of the month, since this is the last day of the month. So, we've had several, several good meetings this month, so this ended on a good one tonight. Approval of agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Holliday. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Approval of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six, Mr. Odom.
Number six is our spotlight on education, and we're really pleased with this one tonight. It's Smyrna Elementary School. The English is a second language program. And I'll not give any statistics. Mr. Duke, would you stand up? We introduce the people with you, because I see you've got several of your teachers with you.
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight and kind of display what we're doing at Smyrna Elementary School. I am Trey Duke. I'm the principal at Smyrna Elementary. This is Amy Patton. She's the assistant principal at the school. Just to give you a quick rundown of our school, in case you're, to make you a little more familiar, we have roughly 818 students at our elementary school. Of those 818 students, 41 percent of them qualify as English as a second language learner. So, almost half of our population are qualified as ESL students. Roughly 38 percent of our students are Caucasian, 43 percent are Hispanic, about 9 percent are African-American, and 8 percent of our students are Asian, actually of the Karin Nation from the East. We have a very interesting situation at Smyrna Elementary School with the size of our ESL population. With 41 percent of our students being ESL, it takes a large team as we attempt to close the gap and to educate them. We have eight ESL teachers at our building, and I want to introduce them. They're here tonight. Jenna Gibbons, Samantha Harvey, Holly Kitchen, Beth Williams, Don Sandlin, Ashley Toomes, Lori Zellhoffer, and Rachel Haltwanger.
Our vision at Smyrna Elementary School is students empowered for success, and we take that seriously, especially with our, all of our students and with our ESL students as well. So, we've prepared just a small snippet of a video, about five minutes, to kind of show you, and then I'll follow up with just a couple specifics, but of what we're doing at Smyrna Elementary to help close that achievement gap.
I am Jenna Gibbons, and I'm the ESL team leader here at Smyrna Elementary. At Smyrna Elementary ESL, our particular department has a unique situation in that we have the largest ESL population in the county, and we have some of the lowest demographics as well. We provide students with the language that they need, but we also provide them with the background and the experiences they might not have in their home or growing up. So, we kind of provide them with reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills, but also the essential vocabulary that they might need, whether it's kind of basic vocabulary versus academic vocabulary as well. And so, we kind of provide them with different experiences through songs, through poems, through puppets, through cooking recipes together, performing, you know, different plays together. We try to vary all the activities we do. I think it's different because sometimes we move quickly through things, but a lot of times, we might stop and go slowly through things, in that if we're reading a passage in the regular classroom, they might not have the time to stop at a particular concept or vocabulary word. We have the luxury of doing that, whereas our focus is if we need to stop, we're going to stop. And we can kind of provide them with visuals if they need it, movement if they need it. So, we know that if that, more than likely if we know our students, if we come to a word or a couple words they don't know, we know we're going to have to stop, and we're okay with stopping. We have approximately between 800 and 900 students at our school. 8 percent are Asian, and our Hispanic population, we have 41 percent Hispanic versus we've got 39 percent Caucasian students. Of the 800 or 840 that we have, about 300 are either receiving ESL services or monitoring them as a T1 or a T2. Like I said, we have eight teachers. We share classrooms. So, we have two classrooms in the building we share, which is a pretty small space where we divide our classroom in half, and we each pull in our different groups. And then, we have two portables outside where we do the same thing. And so, throughout the day, we have multiple groups coming in and out. You know, a lot of our groups, our students know that the other teacher's kids are going to be leaving, and considering all the distraction, they handle it pretty well. They're just kind of used to it. But it does make it difficult. I think a lot of our students come from certain situations where other students at other schools might not. We have a particular population that comes from a country in Asia where they grew up in a jungle. They grew up in, with experiences that we cannot even imagine, but they've also not had the experiences that we have. They've never maybe picked pumpkins before. They've never been in a classroom, have never experienced sharing before, have never, even if they're a fifth grader. So, we kind of have to be a mom, a dad, a teacher, a mentor, all of those things at our school. And we also have to welcome our parents here, because they've never been in a school either. We also have three EAs who are Spanish translators, and then we have one parent liaison. She is Karin. They also have a unique job, because they work in the classrooms with students. They help translate. So, if a student doesn't understand something a teacher is talking about, if they're talking about cells, the translator might be, the REA might be in there, and she might kind of interact them kind of side by side to kind of re-explain what they're talking about in their native language. And they are always coming in and out of the office, helping parents with paperwork. They're answering phone calls. So, they're busy, just as busy as we are. We also try to, you know, when they come to our room, they feel that they are welcomed there, that it's a welcoming environment where they can use their language, they can take risks with their language, they kind of feel comfortable making mistakes, and that it's okay.
So, to just highlight a couple of the things you saw, our ESL students, due to the large number we have, one of the great things we're able to do is do some really specialized grouping. So, with eight teachers, students that are ESL students take the ELDA test, which is a language acquisition test to determine their placement. And we're able to group those students for the next year, depending on how they, what their strengths were. So, if they have a strength in writing, or if they have a deficit in writing, we can group ESL students that way in the grade level. And with the number of teachers we have, they're able then to really focus on those deficits that those specific students have. Our T1 and T2 students, which are transitional students, means they're in that first or second year out of the program, still count as an ESL student for us, but they're no longer receiving that direct service from the ESL teacher. So, we really target those students as well when it comes to interventions and supports. Our ESL teachers push into the general curriculum quite a bit. They do the mandated time with the state, and then we have actual set aside times, especially in third grade, for them to go in and work in the classroom with the students as well for additional support. Collaboration is key. Every ESL teacher is assigned to PLCs, and they attend those PLC meetings. We talk about what's going on with specific students. But not only that, they take it a step further. Our ESL teachers will go into classrooms and model lessons for the general ed teachers as well with effective ESL teaching strategies. We've opened up a computer lab before school this year, and every day when the buses get there, the 45 minutes before school starts, we've handpicked students to work on a program with that language acquisition as well. We're sending general ed teachers to PSYOP training, and there's lots of, like I said, collaboration and communication between the classroom teacher, the ESL teacher, and outside organizations. You saw, featured some of our Karin students who live in one apartment complex in Smyrna, or one major one. There's actually a tutoring center there in the complex. That tutoring center, and our teachers speak quite a bit, again, just trying to give extra resources. So, these are the specifics that these students need. We try to talk in specifics about the students, not broad categories. This is what they need. This is what this child needs. This is how we can help this child. And putting all this together, again, our goal is to see that gap continue to close. We saw a good closure last year in our math gap with our ESL students. We want to see that transferred over to reading as well. So, again, thank you for letting us show what we're doing at Smyrna Elementary School, and what these fantastic teachers are doing every day with the students.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know there are so many variables that take place, and I'm sure parent participation has a lot to do with it, but is there some way you can give an idea to us of when you get a student in, how long it will take them to completely transition out and be fully prepared to get into a general education classroom setting and be functional, or beyond functional, be?
And a lot of it depends on where they're coming from, and we have students that are ESL students who were born in this country, who have been in this country their entire life, but they live in a Spanish-speaking home, or they live in a home where the English is not the language spoken. But they're constantly being immersed outside of the home in English as well. Those students may progress differently than a student who, again, has come actually here, and again, I'll use our Karin students as an example, who may have come here second grade, third grade, and it's their first time in an American school, and they're totally new to the program. Usually, we see around, if they start to test out of the program, and it's based on their ELDA scores, we usually see a larger jump of that in fourth grade, or the upper grades more than, for the ones that have come later, more than the third grade time. But again, once they're out of the program, they have that two years of transition time, that they're still being monitored. The teachers monitor them, the ESL teachers check in on them, and we're keeping a very close eye on them. I'm sorry, I can't give you a...
I didn't expect you to focus on real life, and I understand how that would be, but I wonder if we're looking at a two or three-year window, does that sound fair?
I would probably say more than two or three windows, most definitely, more than a two or three-year window. A lot of our students are going to be ESL students when they come to us in kindergarten, and they're going to be an ESL student when they leave in fifth grade.
Okay.
The Karin students that he has are those that were in what used to be the old Burma, and many of these families have been in refugee camps, and some of them really have never been in a school. And we even have some that come to high school, other members of the same family. So, it's a tough transition for these students.
Yes, sir.
Is your population staying pretty static? I mean, they're coming from kindergarten and working their way up, or do you still have several moving level, kind of a level entry?
With our Karin students, we get more, we'll get some usually every year. We get a few more that are coming in. We had a kindergartner who joined us, I think, last week. Last year, we had several that came in third grade, that were of the age of third grade and fourth grade. So, we're still seeing a pretty steady influx of students as they're coming in.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mr. Duke, we sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
He has no choice to be successful, because his mother-in-law is one of the best teachers I've ever known, Ms. Mays.
Linda Mays, yeah. Pretty much.
You had some tough shoes to follow.
She was my mentor my first year in the class.
Mr. Duke himself is one of the National Millican Award winners, if y'all remember him just a few years ago. So, he's earned the courtesy of that. Just a great staff, great atmosphere at the school. Go visit them. You'll enjoy seeing how they work with those kids, and been doing great, really, with AMOs, this annual measurable objectives and all this. To achieve what they achieve with the measure that they have is extremely tough, but very, very dedicated staff there. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up, we've got visitors. I've got two phones here, but I believe, I believe just one of them's here. Dr. Sam Stukel. Dr. Stukel, welcome. Dr. Ash said if I let you, you may preach to us an hour.
No, not preach, I would teach.
Teach, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm a college teacher, so I've been trained to talk for 50 minutes regardless of how much I have to say.
Generally, we try to, we try to go three minutes.
That's, that's...
Somebody confiscated my timer up here, so...
Oh, good.
I guess you just carry on, and the board members get tired, just wink at them or something like that.
There you go. Well, thank you to the board for letting me speak to you. I'm Sam Stickel. I'm the president of the PTO at Central Magnet School, and I'm here representing a number of parents, sort of scattered around, and we would like primarily today to express our appreciation for you providing Central Magnet School. It's been a godsend for many of us. And so, I just want to talk a little bit about Central Magnet, because it's, I think, a wonderful place. The administration, and Dr. Ash is here, but is very good at trying to make sure our kids are continually challenged and have the resources they need to move to whatever level they're capable of. But lots of schools have good administrations, and the teachers are also really good pushing the students. Sometimes the teachers are being pushed to stay ahead of the students. And, but lots of schools have good teachers. What makes Central great is the students. It's an incredible bunch of kids who have created an environment that is academically rigorous, where that's valued, that is tolerant and accepting of people from all kinds of backgrounds, and with, of course, all kinds of quirks and whatever, that encourage each other, that I think also encourage the teachers and the administration to push to a higher level. And if you ever want to see just a fantastic bunch of kids, go wander around the halls at Central Magnet School during the day someday, and listen to what they say to each other. It's just a fantastic place. And I want to give you an example, I guess, from our own personal experience. My daughter, who's sitting right there by Dr. Ash right now, is in ninth grade. My son will be coming to Central next year, is in, will be in sixth grade. But my daughter went to our zoned middle school for her first year, because Central had not opened yet, so for sixth grade. And she did very well academically, she had very good teachers, but the sort of social atmosphere was very difficult, and she was becoming very, was very much an outsider. And I could tell that she was starting to feel that, right? She was getting more withdrawn. She'd always been very open, and she was withdrawing into herself and becoming kind of very closed. And when Central opened, and she went to Central, she came back, like, within a few days, saying, "My people." And she flowered. She has blossomed at Central. It has been transformational for her and for our family. And I know I speak for a lot of other parents who were, who have children at Central. It has just been an amazing thing. And so, I just wanted to sort of express, and I think we all wanted to express our appreciation, because Central is a godsend for us. And the fact that it challenges our kids to push higher and supports them in being who they are. My daughter now has, you know, is performing very well academically, but she's also played volleyball for the past three years, and is involved in theater, and is becoming a whole, well-rounded person in her experience at Central, not just academic. And so, like I said, it's a godsend, and I just wanted to express our appreciation to you for the school and for your continuing support. So, thank you.
Appreciate those words. Any more? I'd just, I'd just like to say, tell Dr. Ash, personally, I appreciate the job he's did in building it to what it is, and appreciate all the parents, PTO. I can't say I ever hear a negative thing about Central. And all I hear is good things, so I appreciate the work you do too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight.
Number eight is courses offered for credit in grades nine through 12. The Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in part, "A listing of courses offered for credit in grades nine through 12 will be approved annually by the board." The motion is recommended approval, motion to approve the list of courses for credit in Rutherford County Schools grades nine through 12 for the 2013-14 years as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday, and second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine.
Number nine. Special course, courses request. The Instruction Department is requesting permission to make an application to offer credit for special courses under the following guidelines. These are the state rules and regulations, 521-3.052A. Local school systems may offer special courses not listed in 521-3.06 on an experimental basis. The Commissioner of Education must approve each course in advance each year. After three years, the course may become permanent part of the local school program upon approval by the State Board of Education. After three years, a special course request must be resubmitted if the teacher listed on the application changes. Recommend approval, motion to approve Rutherford County Schools making application for new special courses to be offered in the named schools in 2013-14 as presented.
I've heard the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Mr. Holliday.
I think it's worth noting that the action we took just previous to this is the state requirement, and this is our local influence. These are the courses that are unique to Rutherford County, that have been designed and developed, and in some cases are a model to other places around the state, and are unique to our educational system. They answer specific needs, and they certainly reflect the values of our community. When there are discussions afoot about local influence on curriculum and those type of things, I think it's worth pointing out this action right here that we're taking tonight, where unique courses are designed by our local school system and our local educators to answer the specific needs of our community.
Appreciate it. All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10.
Number 10 is summer school grades six through 12. The Instruction Department is requesting approval for the 2013 summer school calendar. Plans are for middle and high school course offerings. Middle school sites will be Laverne Middle School and Oakland Middle School, and the high school site will be Riverdale High School. Middle school and high school offerings will be available during the first semester from June 3 through June 27, 2013. The high school only second semester is scheduled for June, from June 28 through July 26, 2013. Transportation service is not provided. Tuition will remain at $100 for the middle school, $100 per one-half credit for high school, and $200 for driver's education. Recommend approval, motion to approve the Instruction Department's request for the summer school sites and calendar as presented. We're seeing a decline in summer school enrollment, partially because of the seven-period day, and of course, we offer night classes, you know, also now. So, it will not surprise me with us, the next thing, coming up with some online courses that probably, there are not many districts in the state that still offer summer school, but it certainly gives our students, we have a number graduating early, and we have a number that make up credit so they can graduate on time in that four years in one summer. But it's kind of evolving from when I was first in instruction, 11, 1200 students, you know, down to numbers in around 800 or so, and I would not be surprised to see it decline even further, as students have more opportunity during the actual academic year.
All right, you've heard this recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Nipper, seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 11.
Number 11 is the online summer school courses, grades nine through 12. The Instruction Department is requesting approval for the 2013 online summer school course development and instruction. Plans are for high school course offerings. The high school site for lab work and testing will be Riverdale High. High school offerings will be available during the first semester from June 3 through June 27, 2013, with the second semester scheduled from June 28 through July 26, 2013. Tuition will be $125 per one-half credit for high school coursework. Development instruction for the first five students will be paid for by extended learning funds provided by Tennessee Department of Education in summer school tuition. The following courses will be offered during summer school for 2013 for grades nine through 12, and the A and B actually is for first semester, second semester, and each of those being a half a credit. We will offer English 9, English 10, English 11, English 12, physical science, geometry, bridge math. Bridge is the fourth year of math when the state required it for students that might not be taking calculus or something like that. Personal finance, government economics, and world geography. Recommend approval, motion to approve the Instruction Department's request for the online summer school proposals as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tackett. I'll give it to you. Mr. Nipper, you got the second?
Second.
All right, got the motion by Mr. Tackett, seconded by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion? Mr. Holliday.
This is perhaps tonight's occasion to remind any who are watching that the board had a work session on Tuesday evening where this and many other topics, including the consent agenda, were discussed completely. On this particular topic, we spent some time talking about how these online courses would actually transpire, and the integrity of the courses, specifically that the students' work would be monitored, and that they would have to be physically present for the assessments, which ensures the integrity of the grades.
All right, you heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12.
I actually shared that with Health and Ed the other night. They seemed excited, because you've got courses that you don't have to have bricks and mortar for. You know, so they were very open to that when they heard it. Laverne High School, the dual enrollment academy. In a previous meeting, Laverne High School presented a plan to develop a dual enrollment academy with Motlo State Community College. The presentation included several procedural requests for establishment of the academy. Three of the procedural requests are not addressed by board policies yet fall under the responsibilities of the Director of Schools and Staff. Number one was transportation. The request for a few high school students to ride an earlier bus with elementary, middle students to Roy Waldron, Laverne Lake, and Cedar Grove Schools can be granted by the Transportation Director. No board action would be required. These will be the students that we talked about were going to the early morning class at Motlo, and that's why they would need to come early. Staff consideration. Laverne High School has requested that class sizes of 10 or more students in dual enrollment be accepted. While we typically ask for 15 or more students, this request is consistent with initial enrollments in some advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes. The Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction monitors and approves these courses. No direct board action would be required. Number three is zoning. Enrollment in dual enrollment academy would be... Enrollment in dual enrollment academy will be similar to the zone exemption process for international baccalaureate program. Students will complete a zone exemption request based upon minimum scores from the ACT Explorer and Plan Score Criteria. The normal zone exemption process will be used with accelerated approval for students seeking enrollment in the dual enrollment academy. And number four is the one that does require Board action, textbooks. Motlo State Community College has notified Laverne High School that the college textbooks used will be acceptable for three years. The Laverne High School Dual Enrollment Academy is requesting that the school system furnish the appropriate textbooks since high school and college credit will be granted. Motlo, I think I mentioned the other night, but for people that might be in our audience or listening tonight, most of these can be our high school courses. The main one here was one in for history and all that was different than what we offer in the high school level, so this should not be a great expense to us. So, recommended approval, motion to approve for three years of Rutherford County School System loaning required textbooks to students participating in the Laverne High School Dual Enrollment Academy.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday and second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this?
I just have a question, I guess I could have asked too, Steve, to think too. These students would, this would be typically juniors and seniors taking these courses.
They will be juniors and seniors.
Okay. So, the zoning exemptions, from an athletic standpoint, going to be minimal at best, and they're still going to have to follow TWAA guidelines. If they come in on a zone exemption, they would lose a year of eligibility.
So, we will probably have some that will, in the IB program, you can enter, you know, freshman or sophomore.
Sure.
In that pre-IB program. My guess is because if they're an athlete and all, we will see the same thing for the Dual Enrollment Academy. The people that are anticipating this, and the expectation, of course, it will be that they will be enrolled in there. But I think, in all fairness, you'd have to do that to the student who wishes also to be an athlete.
They have to follow through with the program.
Have to follow through the program, just like you have the requirement they must follow through with the IB program, or they'll have to go back to their zone school. So, the same expectation, I've discussed this with Mr. Ash, and he's concurs with that also, the same expectation is there.
So, it would work maybe, I guess, in reverse, what I'm asking, then if they did enroll that anticipation as a freshman, and then at the junior level chose not to.
They're going to lose eligibility.
They're going to lose eligibility to go back, because they're going to be put back to their zone school, who is eligible at that point.
Anybody else? All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 13.
Number 13 is Laverne High School Baseball Scoreboard. Principal Dirk Ash of Laverne High School has requested permission to construct a new scoreboard at the high school baseball field. The scoreboard is approximately six feet high by 26 feet in length and 10 inches deep. It is a fair play scoreboard by Translux costing $17,245, including installation. It will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board or Laverne High School with funds coming from the LHS Baseball Boosters Club. Recommended approval, motion to approve construction of a fair play baseball scoreboard at Laverne High School baseball field funded by the Boosters Club as presented at no cost to the Board or Laverne High School.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper, seconded by Mr. Holliday. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Before you go any further, Mr. Carter, how we doing on Stewart's Creek?
Doing great. We're on schedule and on the budget. We're going to be open on time. We're in the process of putting in ceilings inside now. The finishes are going in, the main area. The gym is coming along well now, so all the stadium facilities are under construction and doing well, so I don't see any problems with being open on time.
Good. Everything else good, I guess?
Everything's good, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I walked through the structure two weeks ago, and it's amazing. It's going to be an amazing facility. Am I correct that it's going to be the largest footprint high school in the state?
It will be, and some of that is due to an increased square footage of the CTE area plus some modifications we made to some existing computer labs and that type of thing.
Thank you. Number 14.
Number 14 is school lunch prices for 2013-14. Under the terms of the 2010 Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, our average meal price needs to be moving towards an average of $2.59, and that is $2.92, the federal reimbursement for a free meal, less .33. The federal reimbursement for a full pay meal equals $2.59. Our à la carte food sales can be included in this calculation, and with the à la carte sales, we are meeting this test and can hold our student meal prices. We last increased our student meal prices for the 2008-2009 school year. However, the U.S. Department of Agriculture entitlement per meal of 27 and 3/4 cents has to be added to this minimum price for adult meals. We are requesting to set the teacher meal price for 2013-14 at $2.90, the price of a visitor's meal to $3.10. This is an increase of 10 cents for these two groups. The recommended approval, motion to approve the 2013-14 school lunch prices as follows: Elementary, $2; middle, $2.25; high school, $2.25; teachers, $2.90; visitors, $3.10.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Holliday, seconded by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? We discussed this the other night. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. B.
B is some of the financial cleanups associated, which is, will be more common from now till the end of the year. This is Race to the Top Amendment. March is the window for amending the Year 3 Budget for our Federal Race to the Top project. The proposed amendment increases regular instruction 71-100 expenditures by $44,925.81 and decreases expenditures in regular instructional programs 72 to 10 by the same amount. The amendment will allow us to pay our annual support fees for Compass Learning and Read 180 at Holloway before the Year 4 Race to the Top funds become available in early October 2013. The funds being reallocated are primarily budgeted for substitute teachers used to cover for in-service days. Recommend approval, motion to amend $44,925.81 to regular instruction 71-100 expenditures and to decrease expenditures in regular instruction program 72-10 by the same amount as presented. This allows us to use some of the Federal Race to the Top funds to cover some of the things that we might locally. Those, when you see Compass Learning and all, typically when you buy a software program of this magnitude or something like that, there's some annual fee that allows updates and all to that particular program, so this is what that's about.
Some move.
Got a motion by Mr. Nipper, seconded by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 15, Mr. O.
Number 15 is new and revised policies on the first reading. Policy 5.302, which is a sick leave policy, the revision is, the purpose of the revision is to change the definition of immediate family member for bereavement leave to the same definition used of immediate family member for sick leave. Number B, policy, you want me to, you want to cover mine?
Let's do mine.
B policy, 4.602, which is the GPA and class rank of students. Purpose of the revision is to add salutatorian requirements to the existing policy and to specify requirements for valedictorian and salutatorian must be met by the end of the seventh semester beginning in the 2014-15 school year. These requirements become effective with all students who begin high school in the 2009-10 school year. C is policy 6.304, Student Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying Intimidation. The purpose of this revision is to reflect the most current Tennessee School Board Association model policy on this issue by incorporating new statutory reporting requirements and definitions for cyberbullying and hazing. D is adoption of policy 3.211, Energy Use and Conservation. The purpose of this adoption is there's a possibility for the school system may be able to access state funding for energy conservation projects. The first step toward accessing the funding is the adoption of an energy use and conservation policy for the district. The policy will also allow for a percentage of savings derived from the program to be used for further conservation projects. And E is adoption of policy 4.4061, this is Employee Use of Social Media. Purpose of the revision, with the increased use of social media by students and employees, school districts have a need for a policy providing guidance and regulation in this area. This policy was developed after reviewing TSBA's model policy, along with several other school system policies. So, the motion, the recommended approval, motion to approve the revisions to policy 5.302, policy 4.602, and policy 6.304, and the adoption of policy 3.211 and 4.406 on first reading as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Blankenship, seconded by Mr. Nipper. Any discussion?
Might tell people listening that all Board members serve on the Policy Committee, so this is something that you've had the chance to look at, and we've just been looking at it for several weeks, actually.
Might add, we've got administrators.
Community members.
Community members, teachers. We've got several people involved in doing this, so. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 16, general discussion. Mr. Tackett?
Let me make a quick comment on that article that we have before us, and was also from the Commissioner Huffman here. I can only speak from this from my standpoint. We have one administrator in our midst now, and hopefully he will feel the same way, two administrators, excuse me, that may feel the same way. But I think that the comment was made that we need to move our decision-making process more centralized to the site-based, as opposed to having such large entities, if I can just quote it, pretty big bureaucracies that actually remove power and decision rights from the building and suck up a lot of funding that should be going to kids. I can't agree more that that's not what we should be doing. And I do think that this Board has acted for years, and I say, I can see it from both sides. I think we have really tried hard here to make sure that we make those decisions be made at the building level where they best can be made. And so, there may be systems that are guilty of this. I hope Rutherford County's system is not guilty of that. I certainly don't think that it is, and I think we, I just want to make that comment, that I do think that we need to continue to allow our principals to make decisions that are best for their schools. They know their schools, they know their students, they know their needs, and that's exactly the direction we need to be going. And I do think that that's what Rutherford County Schools has done for a long, long time, and I think that's why we're successful.
It has not been too many years ago, if I might add, that the Tennessean actually ran a comparative survey, looking at school districts across middle Tennessee within their area, and asking what are the number of administrators in the central office compared to the number of students and teachers out in the schools? And, Mr. Evans, we were the lowest in the middle Tennessee at that time, right? And through my years in instruction, I think I told you, we didn't hire anyone, so I don't think we, I don't think we've changed much, even though we've grown several thousand students.
And if I could just add, I think that's a point I want to make sure to add to that, that we are below the state spending average per student.
We are.
And yet, we, as a system, have extremely high scores as being a school system of distinction as would show. So, while I'm disappointed that there may be systems in the state that fit into that, I certainly hope that we're not, and if anybody thinks that we are, I hope you'll call it our attention, and we'll do the best we can to put it back in the direction it needs to go.
I agree. I agree with you, Mr. Tackett. I'm going to want to put this out. The main reason I put it out, it basically goes to show where the charter school push is coming from, is coming from the top, and a pretty interesting article. I think it works against everything we're trying to achieve from our end of it, so. Anybody else got any comments on it?
Other than, I think it's a little ironic that the Secretary of Education, who a couple of years ago, which we heard a talk at one of our conferences, you know, just promoting charter schools, and then coming back here just a few weeks ago in DC, basically admitting that charter schools pretty much, a few were better, most were not, and the rest were right there along with your public school system. So, I guess Commissioner Huffman must have needed to have heard that talk, because there's no data that says charter schools do any better overall.
I think we have an example with the ESL presentations made here, and then the question I asked was kind of directed to the idea, when you get parent, buy-in and parent participation, you get a much better result with your students. And I think that a charter school is going to have parent participation, and there could be success tied to that.
Could be.
To me, anytime you've got a classroom situation, or school situation, or student situation where you have parent buy-in, the chance of success is far better. And, you know, so if you're going into a charter school situation where you require parents to be participating in what's going on, whatever that situation is going to be, it's going to be better. I wish we could require, I do wish we could require a lot of our parents now, and I know that these ESL students would be in the same situation. If you've got full parent buy-in, it's going to get better quicker.
Well, and I agree with that, and what's ironic is that why do not all charter schools outperform public schools? And for whatever reason, they don't. And I think it may be that they don't have broad-based community support. They may have that singular support, but, you know, charter schools is not the cure, and vouchers certainly aren't.
I think it's hard to get community support when you're busing kids all the way across town to a particular school. I mean, I think Nashville showed that they were busing kids way out of the community area there. It's hard to get parents to come to school in this day and time like that. That's why I think we have, we have the idea of this cluster of schools, you know, elementary, middle, and high school, to form that community, because you know houses are built around it. It forms that community that makes buy-in a whole lot easier, a lot better. I mean, look at how Blackman Communities come into us saying, "We are a community." So, I mean, it's something you have to think about.
Mr. Holliday?
I'll share with the Board that after our work session on Tuesday night, I also went over to the Health and Education Committee meeting and got to see Mr. Odom, Mr. Sandvig, Mr. Clardy, all represent our system in outstanding form, explaining the five-year building plan to the Health and Education Committee and fielding their questions. The Health and Ed Committee, you may already know, approved the design phase for Smyrna Primary's expansion and renovation, and also approved not only the design phase, but also full funding for the Blackman Middle expansion. We were particularly complimented by the Chairman, Mr. Jordan there, for an out-of-the-box approach. He made the comment, many times in these situations of just build another school, the Commission has asked the Board of Education, "Can you bring us an option? Are there any other options than buying some more land, building another school?" Which oftentimes is exactly the right solution, but we were complimented for the sixth-grade academy concept at Blackman Middle School and the plans that are in place there. So, that is moving forward, and I think that it is another example of the wonderful working relationship that we enjoy with our county commission, and we certainly appreciate the way they help us. Dr. Vogel? End of the session. Dr. Vogel and Mr. Shelton were also present there. Once again, as we expect, our system was so well represented.
Gary, how about you?
But I think he covered it very well. I mean, they were, again, they asked us to look at ways out of the box or other things, which I think we had done. And again, they were excited about this particular online offering like that. Even the mayor then asked, could we do it for elementary? Did you think so? But I have a little more trouble with online programs for elementary. I really think they need to be there with the teacher. I did tell them, one of the reasons you look at it in high school, because we know, they say now statistically that a person may have eleven occupations, somebody's in high school that before they actually retire in the future, that it's changing so rapidly, that much of the training is actually done online now. Major companies do that training online. If we get our capacity up, and we may do, I know of one other school system, Cookville, Putnam County, is actually requiring one online course of every student before they graduate. Because if you know our mission statement is to prepare today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. And I think when we begin to look out of the box in the ways to do this, we're fulfilling our mission statement, plus we are really preparing our students for that challenge.
Blair?
I was going to move to another topic.
Well, I was just going to say, the response from the Health and Education Committee was very, very supportive. It was near-unanimous votes on most topics, and it brought to mind for me how often our board moves in a unanimous fashion. And as I've talked with different community members, as we're dealing with zoning issues and things like that, one of the things that I've expressed is, I anticipate that when the board comes to a decision, you will very likely see it as a unanimous decision. And it's not because the board is a body that just yields to a lowest common denominator or the path of least resistance or anything like that. It really is characteristic of the hard work principally by our central office that brings outstanding recommendations to the board, and our ability to coalesce behind those and bring an action to the community that we are confident is the best possible solution. I would encourage, you know, other bodies around Rutherford County, when you have the opportunity to act in a unanimous fashion, it reflects to the community, so much so, that we have come to the right decision and we are prepared to move forward. And so oftentimes, it's salacious and, you know, exciting to see a vote that is razor-thin, but it's really effective, in fact, maybe even exemplary, to move in a unanimous fashion.
Blair?
Sequestration. If I...unless something has happened here in the last few hours, it kicks in at one minute after midnight here in just a few hours. Do we have a clue as to, or are pre-planned as far as how it affects us?
The last statements we were getting would be how our projects start October 1, 2013, and next year, and then the discussions that we had earlier, I haven't heard anything different, that is going to impact our allocations. I'm sure we will be doing all sorts of stuff.
The figure was, Mr. Sandvig and I actually listened to a presentation from the Commissioner earlier this week, and one of those things was sequestration. The potential is up to 5.1% from all federal funding, and for Rutherford County, that's a significant amount, because if you remember from the state report card, it was 10, 11%, something like that, of your total dollars. Primarily would be your Title I, your Title II, your Title III, those areas like that that we're talking about. But as Mr. Sandvig says, they said it would not be for this year, because it's funded kind of in advance, which fiscal year you're in, so if it impacts us, it would be starting mostly in the fall. I would be somewhat surprised if it stayed the full 5.1% or else if they might between now and the time that starts prioritize some things about what they want to do. So, don't see a lot of impact for us for the remainder of the 12, 13 year.
My concern is that all of these mandates that have been handed down over the years, you know, have never been fully funded, and partially funded is probably a misnomer sometimes too, is that we're going to have to do more with less, again, unless they curtail some of the mandates. And I've heard no conversation regarding that. Have you? And that's very disconcerting to have to still maintain those levels with less money to help those children that may be challenged either by poverty or special needs.
Anybody else?
Let me thank the board and the district for allowing, last night, the forum at Blackman. It was a forum that pertained to children. Some of the topics were sex trafficking, bullying, synthetic drugs, alcohol abuse, various discussions on that came out. Good information was shared with a lot of people. We had some parents come and stand up and say, my daughter's best friend is being bullied at school right now. She was getting 300 text messages during one class that kept her from taking a test. What do we do? And information was shared to her of how to handle that. We had people from Judge Davenport to Jim Tracy, we had the military there who talked about how, you know, to straighten your life out. It was very, very good time last night, a lot of information was learned. I just want to thank the school district and the board for allowing Blackman to host that. Let me address your text message and all. The policy that you passed is very explicit and says that the devices are to be used for instructional purposes. If that's occurring during that time in that class, parents and others listening, that phone can be taken up from you. So, while we open the door so that when you have children going to practice after school and need to notify mom and all like that, we work with the parents to try to do that, if it's misused in the school, then you lose that privilege. So, that's very clear, and that's in the policy that you passed. Right. I conveyed that to them, and, you know, other people talked about how to see signs of bullying. One girl said, her daughter can't go to ballgames because her boyfriend won't let her go. You know, things like that was brought out last night by parents, and they were addressed by various members of the panel, and it was well-received, well-done last night. And thank everybody for that.
Anything else?
On a lighter note, I got, we all got the invitation to go to Oakland High School's Honor Society, National Honor Society. This is for the juniors. Last spring, last fall, David and I, Mr. Nipper and I, went to the seniors who didn't get inducted in like the fall, the year before, but we got, I went. They have 55 new members. After the induction service, they had a reception in the cafeteria, so you got to visit with the parents and the administration. So, Mr. Spurlock and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Dear did a really wonderful job.
I appreciate you going, Ms. Blankenship, representing us. Anybody else?
Maybe Mr. O might want to comment. There's any further thoughts as far as what the city schools, as we were seeing, maybe some movement toward?
I understand it's on the city council's agenda. They were meeting at seven tonight to purchase 25 acres of property for an elementary school. And I assume most of those details have probably been worked out. I expect it to happen before, usually the details and negotiations are pretty much worked out before it would be placed on the city council agenda.
Certainly good news that that is going to occur.
All right. All mine to these. What's your, Mr. Blair?
I'm good, sir.
All right. For adjourned.